You're live, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call this Greenville County Council Committee of the whole meeting to order, and we will begin with the invocation. I'll call on Counselor Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear Lord, thank you for this time that you've given us. Lord, thank you for this place we can assemble and do the work of the people. Lord, we ask that everything we do here and for our people, our constituents, brings glory to you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for both October 21st and October 28th, which was a special called committee meeting.
Move approval of both sets of minutes.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to move item number four to the end of the meeting, please.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will now move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is motion to reconsider the October 28th, 2025 ballot vote for the Greater Greenville Sanitation District Board vacancy. And Counselor Fant is not with us. I believe Counselor Mitchell may be.
He's supposed to be on line, but he's not. I'll make a motion.
Is Counselor Fant on line by chance? He said he wasn't positive he'd be able to, so...
He emailed me.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Mitchell?
Mr. Chairman, I move to reconsider the ballot vote taken at the October 28th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting, which filled the vacant seat on the Greater Greenville Sanitation District Board.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Chair.
Counselor Farmer?
This Greater Greenville thing has been a thorn in all of our sides this year. Is it even possible to just reconsider this whole board? Because I'm pretty sick and tired of it all.
To reconsider the entire board?
Yeah.
I would have to ask, but I don't believe that would be possible for the other. But we can ask our attorney, see what he says. You weren't ready for that one, were you?
Thanks for the softball. Well, first of all, I have to go ahead and look back, but there was only one vacancy for this one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, if there's only one vacancy, the only thing that's in front of y'all right now that you could reconsider is the vote on that one vacancy. So, right now, no would be in the context of a reconsideration.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to clarify also, we make a recommendation, but ultimately, it's the governor's appointment, correct, on this one? So, yeah. Maybe something we want to make sure that we're speaking with our delegation with in particular.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor. Counselor Mitchell?
Just one thing, and that is, maybe in the future, we should refresh ourselves with rules before we take these things up and avoid this kind of confusion.
Absolutely. And I would actually make the suggestion that some point in time, between this, now and the end of the year even, that if we have time to have a section in one of our meetings to bring up this specific policy and address it and see how we need to handle it moving forward, that's a great idea.
Mr. Chairman, may I add to that too? Because I agree with you, Mr. Mitchell. I certainly think, having been one of the people on the committee that worked on this, I mean, I think we had really good intentions, but that's sort of the beauty of now we've lived through it a couple times, and certainly, there is room for improvement. I'm also thinking there also for us, not just the refresher, but even how we're looking at the materials, it would be great to have a better understanding of here are the districts that have seats, here are the districts that don't have seats. But again, I want to draw our attention to that while the rules, I am still in favor of the rule is to be intentional and to our best efforts to have somebody from every district, but not at the expense of qualified candidates. We should always, being qualified to serve should always be paramount, and our rules allow us the leeway to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think the only thing, I'm, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would say is that I believe a considerable amount of that service is in District 20, and there's no representative. I don't think I've ever had a representative from 20, but maybe I have. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick.
Counselor Collins?
To that note, as far as the equal representation on these multiple boards, there are plenty of boards with more than seven that doesn't have 27. You're okay.
Counselor Fant's with us now?
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to reconsider, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it? We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is Board and Commission Interviews and Appointments. We have...
Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tru.
Do we not need to vote on, if we reconsidered, when are we going to vote on this?
That would be the next item.
Oh, okay. Okay. Oh, I got you. Got you. I'm sorry about that.
And I know it says Board and Commission Interviews and Appointments, but are we going, we're not doing the, are we doing the interview process? Okay. Excellent. Okay.
Oh, just for Thrive.
Just for Thrive. Got you. So, Item A is Greenville, Greater Greenville Sanitation District, as we just discussed in the last agenda item, with one vacancy. There are two applicants, and you have your ballots in front of you currently. While they're collecting those, we'll go ahead and move forward to the... And then, just to make sure, we received Counselor Fant's vote as well. Thank you. We'll next move to Thrive Upstate. We have one vacancy, and I will call on Monica Colbreth first. Welcome. Can you come up and give us your name and address and share with us whatever you would like to share about your potential appointment?
All right. Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. How are you doing today? My name is Monica Colbreth, and I live at 6th Morning Ty Drive in Simpsonville, South Carolina, 29681. So, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I am honored to be considered for the position of the Thrive Upstate Board. So, I want to talk first professionally. I serve as a CDBG Grant Specialist for Union County, and I oversee federal-funded programs focused on accessibility, equity, and improving life for those in our vulnerable households. This work requires strong program oversight, ethical stewardship of resources, and a commitment to ensuring underserved communities receive consistent, high-quality support, and these values align closely with the mission of Thrive Upstate. My dedication to disability services is both professional and personal. I am the mother of three children, two who have special needs, and they are currently clients at VoCAB Rehab right here in Greenville, South Carolina. So, navigating all those systems as a parent has shown me the importance of organizations that empower families, respect the dignity of individuals with disabilities, and provide clear pathways for independence and lifelong support. Because of these experiences, I've met people. So, as I'm meeting different parents as they're navigating IEPs and the 504 processes, I've attended meetings with them, reviewed plans with them, helped ensure their children's needs were truly understood and supported. I know how overwhelming these systems can be, and I know how crucial proper advocacy is. I've also worked with students in our communities. You know, I served in self-contained special ed classrooms in Greenville County, so I've seen firsthand how the strengths, needs, and challenges that our students face. So, with that, if appointed, I feel that I want to take all these combined perspectives as a parent, as a policy administrator, and a special ed practitioner, and a board member who understands both family needs and system-level challenges, because it's a delicate balance. I am committed to meaningful participation, consistent attendance, and decision-making centered on dignity, inclusion, and the quality of life for individuals with disabilities. Thrive Upstate plays a vital role in our communities, and I would be honored to contribute to its continued success. Thank you for your time and considering my application.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Deborah Pickens. Welcome, Ms. Pickens.
Well, that was a hard act to follow, wasn't it? Well, thank you, each and every last one of you, for reopening it. I had told Counselor Fant that I hadn't attended a meeting yet, so I would wait until another time, but he said, "No, go ahead and put in for it." So, thank you very much for reopening the position. Now, not like Monica, as a matter of fact, I looked it up. A councilman, Blount, asked me, he said, "Is there another person running?" I said, "I don't know yet." And then, when I seen Monica's name, we're friends. I thought, this and this, I run it. But nonetheless, I feel like I'm a qualified candidate for the position. I worked with the Greenville County School System for 14 years, and of those 14 years, I worked 11 years in the Special Education Department as a compliance monitor. Therefore, I had to make sure that all my teachers was being compliant with the paperwork that they were serving the students. I do love my special ed kids. My last three years, because the position, they finally consolidated the school board, didn't have enough money, I suppose, and they consolidated, and the compliance monitors, they let someone else take over the position. So, I was asked to work at J. O. Mann in the front office. Well, because of my connection with the special ed student, I had one young guy that came in the office and sat with me every day. Now, his name was Tyler. Tyler was a sweetheart, but Tyler was nosy. So, I had to always tell Tyler, "Tyler, turn around. Tyler, don't listen to the conversation," you know. But we had a very good working relationship. I found that the special ed kids are very loving, and the Bible tells us that we're not to only think about ourself, but we are to think about others. And that's why I have gotten involved in Green Links, because that involve other people. That's why I took the Greenville County Academy and just graduated today. And that's why I have always been involved in so many different activities. Girl Scott, I have been a part of NAMI. I have taken every health education training that I can. But I just hope that you would consider me. I am a retired, so I do have time to attend meetings, and you know I come to county council meetings all the time, so I'm not apt to, I'm not apt to really miss a meeting. So, if you consider me for the position, I'd be most grateful, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on your certificate today.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Having heard that, we have our ballots in front of us. While she's collecting those, we will go ahead and move on to the next agenda item, which is Special Task District nomination and appointment, and we have Sterling Community Special Task District, and I believe this is Counselor Mitchell's district, so I will turn it over to him, and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all of you also for giving me a little bit more time on this. We've had some difficulty getting people to come forward for the Special Task District, and we went out again, and we were able to get a couple more people, and they're all very qualified, and they seem to be very passionate about the Sterling community and want to do a lot to help the community. And having said that, I would like to move for appointment the following names: Vicki Ashley, Nick Campbell, Jack Connolly, Craig Evans, and Dorothy Russell.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Mitchell. Any discussion on this one? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? We will move right along now to Agenda Item Eight, which is motion to request the Planning Commission reconsider Owens-Glen. Counselor Bradley?
For the notice provided in the agenda packet, I move direct to Planning Commission reconsidering its approval of preliminary plans, variances for our PP-224-109, variances PAR-224-105, Owens-Glen.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Counselor Tru?
Mr. Bradley, why are you requesting us to request that they reconsider this?
Because I have a petition with a thousand names on it, Ashton.
Is that in the rules? I mean, is that a reason in the rules that it would allow us to request that? I mean, because they're a quasi-judicial body, they're not supposed to be swayed by politics, and that's what you're doing with a petition. So, what do the rules say about what allows them to reconsider? Because I think we're on shaky ground. You know we've had this discussion before. You know that we've been sued.
I do.
And I don't, I'm not sure it's prudent to be doing this again.
I know by the rules, we can do it, because I've been to council, and I'm aware of the repercussions. And, you know, sometimes we need to stand up for our citizens and be prepared for the repercussions.
What do the rules say, Mr., if I could ask Mr. Antley what the rules say? Sorry...
Can I ask anything? They just go into executive session yet. This is based upon the existing bylaws of the Planning Commission. They operate under Roberts Rules, which, much like y'all's rules, has things like a reconsideration option, and you can change them. Y'all do it through your council rules. The Planning Commission does it through its bylaws. And forever and a day, as long as I've ever seen them, the bylaws include a reconsideration. The Planning Commission bylaws include a reconsideration section, which allows for reconsideration under two conditions. One is, and it's unfettered, it just says, if requested by county council, that's one, and two is if you're, if you lost, if you were the developer or the homeowner and you lost, or property, or excuse me, and you lost, you would be able to present other evidence or new evidence or something like that. So, there's two provisions. But one is just a blanket. Right now, no particular time provision in it. It just says, "Request by county council." And again, it's a request. They don't have to do it if they receive the request, but that's what it says in their bylaws. And there's no reason that we have seen that they can't do it.
Does that, does that help us in a court of law if we're sued by the developer?
I think if we're going to start talking about those type of things, it's more appropriate probably to handle that in an executive session, which I'm happy to do.
I don't want to drag this out, guys. I mean, but I just think we're on shaky ground here, and I'm not sure that this is a good practice for the county, so I'm going to be voting against this.
Counselor Seaman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bradley, I certainly appreciate where you're coming from, but I do think it would be prudent for us to hear from the attorney, so that regardless of how we end up voting, we have heard the evidence. So, I'm happy to make a motion for us to go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending threatened or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the county and other adversary situations invoking the assertions against it made by the county concerning requesting that the Planning Commission reconsider its approval of the Owens-Glen preliminary plan and variance.
Before we vote on this motion, I want to say congratulations for making it through that, because I would have been lost with everything going on. So, all in favor of the motion to go into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, so we will enter executive session. So, anyone not up here, I think they will be asking you to exit.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Committee of the Whole went into executive session for the receipt of legal advice, where the legal advice relates to a pending threatened or potential claim or other matter covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the county, and other adversary situations involving the assertions against or made by the county concerning requesting that the Planning Commission reconsider its approval of the Owens-Glen preliminary plan and variance, and no action was taken during that executive session.
All right. Thank you. And so, we are now to the motion, which Counselor Bradley has already read, to request that the Planning Commission reconsider Owens-Glen. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Roll call's been requested?
Yeah, there we go.
There you go. You're up. Unlike your chair.
I'm a yes vote, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Dr. Fant acknowledged he was a yes vote on this, let's see.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven in favor. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. It's seven in favor, five in opposition.
All right. Thank you. So, the motion passes. And before we go to the next and second-to-last agenda item, I wanted to go and make sure and announce these appointments. For the Greater Greenville Sanitation, with one vacancy, we have Ms. Nikki Williams. And for the Thrive vacancy, we have Ms. Deborah Pickens. So, congratulations to both. And with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is Renewable Water Resources, or better known as REWIA presentation. So, I think there's like three rows of you. I saw a lot of people come in. Whoever would like to come forward, welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name's Phyllis Henderson. I was going to say that I had been in your seats, but I actually have never been in these seats here. So, what a wonderful new building. So, welcome. I serve on the Renewable Water Resources Commission, which you old timers may remember as Western Carolina Regional Sewer Authority. A lot of people don't realize that it's one and the same, but I wanted just real briefly, before Rebecca West comes and gives her presentation, to recognize our other commissioners that are here, our chairman, Emily DeRoberts, from Anderson County, George Fletcher, our vice chair, Tom is here, our secretary, and Clint, and Clinton Thompson. So, and quite a few staff members here. So, thank you for the opportunity for us to just bring you up to date on kind of what we are working on, and just so you know how things are going. So, Rebecca?
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about my favorite water topic, which is water today. So, just a little bit about renewable water resources. We celebrated our centennial this year. I like to think we look pretty good for 100 years old, and as we continue to serve the upstate of South Carolina, our genesis was here in Greenville County, as we started to serve in 1925. As we've continued to move forward, we've brought innovation and creativity to the field of water, ensuring that as our community changes, and we have the opportunity of cleaning the water that comes to us, that's been used by our customers, and returning it back to our rivers and streams. You know, we look back, and the beauty of the upstate continues to be renourished every day by the 44 million gallons of water that we return to the Reedy and the Enery and the Saluda and the Tiger Rivers. So, we're quite proud of that. And as REWIA has grown and changed, we've had the opportunity to serve counties outside of Greenville. Greenville is our primary service area, as you could see on the map here, but we also have the opportunity to serve portions of Anderson and Pickens and Lawrence and Spartanburg County. And so, as we look at that collective service area, we're able to serve close to a half a million people and provide them with their exclusive wastewater services. So, we are different from Greenville Water. I like to say we have the water with personality. You know, it's the water that takes on different shapes and forms, and what people like to add to it every day, and it's our job to clean it and return it to drinking water quality. So, I encourage you, one day, come and visit us at our treatment facilities, because we have nine of them that are located across the upstate. As you could see, our REWIA by the numbers, we serve about 165,000 accounts, which equates to about a half a million people. We have nine treatment facilities that are, I'll share a map of that in a few minutes. 230 employees that are committed to, that are truly public servants. So, we had the opportunity a couple of weeks ago, weeks ago, to talk about our response to Hurricane Helene with Hesha and with the city, and no one missed a beat, right? Everybody got to flush their toilets. That never stopped. And so, we're quite proud of that, even though we didn't have power and internet, and we do depend on the internet to help us with our technology. So, those are things that often you don't think about, and we hope that you don't have to think about as we continue to provide this service. We also have about 430 miles of pipe that span across the upstate. It's usually large diameter pipe, because our municipalities, the city of Greenville, Malden, Simpsonville, Fountain Inn, and then Metro connects, collects the wastewater from homes and businesses, and then sends it to us, to our treatment facilities. So, you might want to say, "How do we actually do this? How do you actually clean water?" Well, it's all about our people. As I mentioned, we have 230 of the most dedicated people that provide services 24/7/365. I know you appreciate that, because the county also provides services 24/7/365, and it means you never get a chance to rest. But we are fortunate to have some of the most diverse and highly skilled people that contribute to this community. They are very passionate about not only cleaning water, but more importantly, serving the community here in Greenville and our other, our other surrounding counties. So, as we bring on highly skilled, trained employees that range from engineers to accountants, to operations, to IT, to heavy equipment operators, it's quite a diverse group, our group that we have. But they work hard to do that, and they have the responsibility of taking care of close to $6 billion of public assets. So, that's so important for us to think about. You know, we pride ourselves at REWIA as we continue to look at our history of being innovative and trying to ensure we bring the right technology at the right time. That doesn't mean we need to have Cadillacs everywhere, but we rather need to have the right technology to fit the needs for our community as it's changing. And so, we do that, and we also take our responsibility of making sure that the headwaters of South Carolina are cleaned and protected, because the water that we clean and return becomes somebody else's drinking water downstream. We wish that we could create more water, but you know, God did that for us, and it's our job to take care of it, which we do. As we, in our name, Renewable Water Resources, we renew water every day, but we also renew the other resources that come as a part of our treatment process. Seen here is our BioSolids program, where we take fertilizer that's just a natural part of our treatment, and we provide it to farmers in the upstate. You know, I really, I appreciate this program, not because only it was the first in South Carolina, but every year, we provide 48 million gallons of fertilizer to local farmers. And think about that. That allows intergenerational farms to continue to farm, because they get this product that's equivalent to about a million dollars in fertilizer value. It also allows us an opportunity to share the resources that we have. Our other resources that we look at is we use solar energy, and we also generate heat and electricity from our treatment processes. We try to capture sustainable resources where we can. And I like to say here, these are our most popular employees, our four-legged passive lawnmowers that help us keep the grass cut underneath our solar panels. And then, also, we recycle oyster shells from our restaurants and our community oyster roast each year. And we, and you probably go, "Why oyster shells?" Well, whether you know it or not, is we take these oyster shells and return them to the coast, it allows the shorelines that we restore to be protected against erosion, but more importantly, to grow more oysters. And here's a little trivia for you. So, when you're out playing trivia somewhere, one oyster cleans 50 gallons of water a day. So, they're doing their job on the coast, just as we are in the upstate. So, we see that as another valuable service that we provide. So, I'm going to move forward into, we are truly forward thinkers, and as I mentioned earlier, we have nine treatment facilities. You can see by the yellow dots on the screen here, these are our treatment facilities that are located across our service area, most being in Greenville County. And as we look at the last five years, as we've continued to keep these facilities and the pipes that collect our wastewater renewed and restored, we have invested over $368 million in the past five years, and we know that number will keep growing. Of that, $321 million was here. Of that, $321 million was here focused in Greenville County. So, why is it do we invest in wastewater infrastructure? Well, first and foremost, it's for public health. You know, when we look back to the genesis, the beginning of REWHA, we were born out of a water quality crisis. You know, the Reedy River needed help, and so, we also saw the, the community at that time saw the need for protecting public health, and so, that's our most important thing that we do. We protect the public's health, because we take that, that water with personality, and we clean it up, and we restore it back to the rivers and streams. We also protect the environment, and we also ensure that the community in which we serve has the resiliency to be the community it wants to be. You know, one of the challenges we have at REWHA is that we serve so many different communities. We serve different counties, but within our, even Greenville County, we serve many communities. We serve downtown Greenville, we serve Simpsonville, we serve Malden, we serve Berea, we serve Taylors, we serve those different communities. So, as we aspire to make sure we're providing the level of service and the type of service each community really wants, we have to think about that. So, how do we do that? We look at comprehensive plans. We listen to what is the desired level of service for each of our communities, and we try to build that into our planning. We also want to make sure that we're there for economic vitality. When businesses and industry wants to locate to our area, we work closely with GADC, we work closely with the Upstate Alliance, and try to make sure we've got the adequate infrastructure in place to support bringing jobs and supporting the type of businesses that, and industry that we want in the upstate. Pictured here is an example of how we were preparing for the changes in downtown Greenville, when we had our big dig, our tunnel that went across and under the city of Greenville that allows for the infill and the changes and redevelopment that the city is providing at this current time. This allows us to go ahead and have the infrastructure in place, so that we don't have to tear up roads, or get up in people, and get in people's backyards, and ensure that we've got the right level of service there. I'd like to highlight, as I finish out this evening, just some of the key investment projects that we have identified over the next 10 years. The projects I've identified here are close to a half a billion dollars in spend, and again, these are to address the changes that we see happening in our, in our communities. We have a project called the Conestee Pump Station, and what this allows is for, it allows us to take our flows from one of our treatment plants to our larger treatment plants, to reduce and limit the time that we have to plan for expansion of the one treatment plant that we're removing flows from, but it also supports the communities of Malden and southern Greenville County. We have the Swamp Rabbit Trail Collection Expansion. What this project does is it allows us to continue to support not only downtown, but parts of Berea, Travelers Rest, and the areas that our partners at Metro Connects, as they're restoring and rehabilitating the lines in the Mill Villages, preparing for what changes may happen as a result of that. So, that is a rather large project that will continue to, to be, I guess, done in phases over the next 10 years. And then we have three treatment facilities that we are having to expand. We've, we've really used up all of the capacity that we've built, say, 20 to 25 years ago. It's time for us to put more capacity in place, again, to put the right technology at the right time. So, we have our Durbin Creek Facility, which is in southern Greenville County, close to the Lawrence County border. We have Georges Creek, which is on the Greenville-Anderson County border area, and then, of course, Malden Road, which is our largest treatment plant that you're most familiar with. Again, this is to make sure that we're planning for what we see is what's changing in the upstate, and how we can be best prepared for that. Again, as we look at our total investments planned from '26 to '35, we look at that 10-year window, it's going to be close to $1.6 billion that we're estimating, and that's a rather hefty spend for us. In fact, it's our largest capital improvement plan that we have. Most of that includes our investments into our treatment facilities, again, trying to put the right technology in the right place, as well as making sure our collection system is large enough to support that, and renewing the resources, the existing infrastructure that we have. So, you're probably wondering, "How is all that going to get paid for?" Well, at Renewable Water Resources, our revenues come from the water and wastewater bills that our customers pay. We don't receive an avalorum tax. All of our true revenues come in at $150 million approximately a year, and we want to make sure that we're investing those dollars the best way that we can, living up to our values of accountability and trust and integrity. So, we take those ratepayer dollars, and we also take new account fees, and those are, those are fees that are charged whenever someone builds a new home, or a business is built, or an industry is brought in, so the new customers are paying a portion of what new growth and new systems and infrastructures needed, and we try to balance that with our existing ratepayers. We also look closely at funding that we receive from the State Revolving Fund, and we continue to advocate that that stays in place. These are federal dollars that are sent to the state level, and what is the beauty of that, is we allow, it allows us to borrow money at a low interest rate, like less than 3%, and that certainly helps our ratepayers and our customers. And then, lastly, looking for opportunities for revenue bonds and public-private partnerships. So, that's just a quick scan of our revenues and how we think about funding our future projects. Again, our focus is to ensure intergenerational rate equity for all of our customers. So, trying to find a way to balance with new customers coming in and their needs for infrastructure, and our existing customers, and what they can afford. As we set our rates, we certainly look at that in a sense of what is affordable for our customers, and as we look at that, it is what our lowest level, lowest quintile ratepayers are capable of paying, that goes into our calculations, and we look at our fees, as they are also added with perhaps Metro's fees or Greenville Water's fees, so that we look at that as a big picture, not just something that we're focused at REWHA. So, I know I'm running close on time, but again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about REWHA with you tonight, and we certainly thank you for your support, and as we continue to move forward, we look forward with planning with Greenville County, continuing to build on our comprehensive plans, and ensuring that those are done in a smart way, but also, again, focused on the desired quality of life for each of the communities that we serve. So, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions, any colleagues have? Comments? Jokes?
Quick comment. I grew up not far from the Malden Plant. I can remember, back in the 70s, but I don't smell it, it's been years since I've smelled it.
We got rid of all those personalities that, you know, we try to get those odor calls and personalities and say, "Yeah, but thank you." We've been working hard at that, and you know, it is, again, we're aware of who's around us, and so, trying to make sure that we are good neighbors and supporting it, their quality of life as well.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
I did have, I saw your last slide, it talked about equity of rates. Do you have some type of, at the bottom, that yellow, something that you would call an impact fee on new development? Basically, it's not the same, obviously, as the government doing it, but do you have an impact fee?
So, our new account fee is, is the fee that a person pays to connect a sewer. Some people may see that as an impact fee, and that is calculated based, again, on what we have used our capital plan to say what our needed investment for infrastructure is, so what is that long-term investment, and then, we use that to help us calculate what that fee is. It's very complicated, but trying to reduce that down to a quick answer for you. Be happy to talk to you about it some more, if you would like to.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation very much.